Good afternoon, good evening. Today is Tuesday, October the 8th. It is now 6:30. We're at La Unión Elementary Cafeteria. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'm gonna do call roll, Mr. Uh... I'm gonna have to roll call time. Mr. Heredia Ramírez.
President.
Mr. Villarreal.
President.
Mrs. López. Dr. B.
Present.
And myself, Elizabala, is present. Mr. Daniel García and Mr. Noe Castillo are absent. We do have a forum. At this time, I would like for all of us to please send up to have a moment of silence Thank you very much. I wanna ask all of these participants to have Mr. Otiérez's family read their prayers. Yes? Dr. B., can you help us out with the protective readings?
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever life.
Section 3 of rule of amendments. Do you have a motion on section 3?
Mr. President, I move that we approve regular board meeting August 12th of the year 2019, public meeting August 28th of the year 2019, and special board meeting August 28th of the year 2019.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor, raise your hand. A lot of motion carries. Anything on public forum? Information, 65, another information.
Information. I wouldn't start with information, I am focused.
I'm gonna go ahead and start on item number 3. I uh, I can give the... That we should recognize all of the principals, not only once a year. They got us a... To a great level. So, uh... Item number 3. The State of Texas Governor, Ray Abbott. Doctor, mention, Dr. Ray... Dr. Ramírez, the month of October 2019, as Principal's on. Teresa Arasola, Principal, Jerome Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. Laura Barrera, Principal, Roque Vera Junior Elementary. At the end, Aménio Salís. I'm sorry. This is the address.
It's Morris.
All principals, can you please step forward?
We ask our board members, Mrs. Gadsam, everyone that is present today, to please join us. Governor Abbott has gone ahead and gave us, sent a proclamation. The state of Texas, Governor, to all who, whom this, uh... Whose this present shall come greeting, knowing that this official recognition is presented to all observing principals' month, October 2019. The most important part of ensuring that young Texans can fulfill the potential of their bright future is providing our children with a rigorous and well-rounded education. Principals are the vital part of our children's education as they set the academic tone for their schools by working collaboratively with teachers to build high academic standards, set performance goals, and utilize best practices for achieving this goal. At this time, I encourage Texans to learn more about contributing to elementary, middle school, and high school. Principals, the role they play in ensuring every children has access to a high-quality education in a safe and supportive environment. Lady Abbott joins me in wishing you the best from our governor, Mr. Abbott. Thank you. I ask you to please step forward, Mrs. Arasola, Principal of General Ricardo Sanchez. Mrs. Laura Barrera, Principal of Roque Guerra Elementary. Mr. Efe Peño González, Principal of Bruja Elementary. Ms. Lorena Treviño, Principal of La Unión Elementary. Ms. Iber Teña, Principal of Bruja Elementary. Ms. Nora Rivera, Principal of Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary. Mr. Daniel Ramírez, Principal of Doctor Ramírez Elementary. Mr. Omar Peña, Principal of Ayes Elementary. Ms. Idani Salinas, Principal of Ringo Elementary. Mrs. Marisa Saldiva, Principal of J&amp;O Elementary. Ms. Monique Vareal, Principal of Ayes Middle School. Mr. Hendrik Cantú, Principal of Verens Middle School. Mr. Rene Peña, Principal of Bruja Middle School. Mrs. Lilian Jones, Principal of Ringo Middle School. Mrs. Lisa Gorena, Principal of Early College High School. Mr. Adolfo Peña, Principal of Bruja High School. Mr. Jorge Peña, Principal of Rio Grande City High School. Mr. Eguiya, Julio Eguiya, Principal of Alternative and Tans to Be. Principals, once again, thank you. Enjoy your month. Please don't go anywhere, we need you to remain here. We have a second part to the presentation. I know it's been a couple of years, I don't remember exactly how many, but if you recall, back when we used to do accountability, we used to give you a wooden plaque and it had all the different things you had accomplished. So, we went back and we looked for the company, found the company, and we've ordered those again. So, we have a surprise for those of you that got a distinction, overall A or overall B. We will be giving you a plaque, so we need you to remain up here. Then, we're gonna take a group picture, it's what Mr. Villarreal told me, and we'll divide the group, half of you on the stage and then the other half of you at the bottom. And we're just trying to do both things so we can expedite. Okay, I'm gonna start with the secondary with Rio Grande City High School, Principal Mr. Jorge I Peña. He has an overall B and a distinction designation in academic achievement for ELA and reading. Rio Grande City CISD Bruja High School, Principal Mr. Adolfo Peña. 2019 overall rating of B and a distinction designation in top 25% comparative academic Preparatory for Early College High School, Ms. Tina El Gorena, Principal. Alto Bonito Elementary, Mrs. Iber Peña, Principal. La Unión Elementary, Lorena Treviño, Principal. 2019 overall rating B. Doctor Mario I Ramírez Elementary, Mr. Daniel Ramírez, Principal. Ringo Elementary, Ms. Idani Salinas, Principal. Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary School, Ms. Nora Rivera, Principal. General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary, Mrs. Teresa Arasola, Principal. 2019 rating B. She also received a distinction designation for the campus of academic achievement in Roque Guerra Junior Elementary, Mrs. Laura Barrera, Principal. 2019 overall rating B. In addition, Mrs. Barrera's campus received a distinction designation for top 25 comparative John and Olive Inojosa Elementary, Ms. Marisa Saldiva, Principal. 2019 overall rating A. Distinction designation that Ms. Saldiva and her campus earned, top 25 comparative growth, and top 25 comparative closing the gap. They're the only elementary that receives two distinctions. We have some middle schools that receive some academic recognition as well. We have Verens Middle School who receive a distinction designation in academic achievement for ELA and reading. And we have Bruja Middle School who receive two distinction designations for academic achievement in science and academic achievement in ELA and reading. On behalf of the Rio Grande City School District, the school board, the administration, we want to congratulate you all. We know that you put a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of late nights, a lot of 14, 16-hour days. I know we talk about it and we laugh and we say, "Okay, I think I spend more time at work than I did at school." And we want to congratulate you for all your hard work because this is the culmination of not one day, not two days, not three days of testing, but a whole semester, a whole year of you, you know, doing whatever it takes to get there. So, congratulations to each and every one of you. We are extremely proud and we expect an A this coming year, so...
Uh, congratulations to all the principals and, uh, like Mrs. Morris said, no pressure, we're accepting the name.
Mr. President, this is all for the day. On behalf of the entire board, the entire community, parents, children, and things of that nature, all the principals did a fantastic job. And, uh, our president saying, "Oh, you can handle it." If these things don't come easy. In other words, it takes students, it takes parents, it takes staff, it takes area, it takes, it takes everybody. On behalf of everybody, congratulations, because you all did a fantastic job.
Mr. President, members of the board, I do want to let you all know that these ladies and gentlemen are working extremely hard and I've seen the hard work that's taking place at the campuses. All students, teachers, administration, they're dedicated and compassionate and I commend them all. And I know that we're gonna do well. Thank you, congratulations.
I don't afford a certain type of possible action, a private request from Ayes Middle School, due to high school, preparatory for early college high school.
Excuse me a second. Can you say item number 3? One, two. We go back to item number 1.
I scale basic, item 1 and 2.
Yeah, but please, Mr. President, is it item 1?
Um, unless you guys are in, that's the... That's the problem.
Mr. President, I'm rushing around. Uh, basically, doesn't the president currently pay a part of the benefits of the community?
We'll do... We'll come to the right end.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Rio High School, Italian Christian program. Mr. President, I... I move that we consider type of possible action and power requests from, uh, A, Ayes Middle School, B, A, Bruja Middle High School, uh, preparatory for early college, Rio High School, uh, as presented in the Catholic Christian program, as presented in a court package, or I can force it to be presented in a court package, that's enough. Do you have a motion on that? Sorry, I was just... But we are preparing for this writing. I can pass it. Item number 1, discuss discussion, consideration, possible action, determination of legal services about the South Calasada County Attorney Department. We are going to see, as you can see, the favor of the community.
Mr. President, members of the board, and the community and people watching us out there. At the last board meeting, Mr. Villarreal requested to see the official numbers, the labels and the money, and the lawyer's seat for the year 2019. And, uh, actually, I am too concerned... The... That is to discuss. I'm discussing. I'm discussing you. I must say, I am too concerned. And I agree that we should have an accurate account of money spent. So, as Justice Committee Chair, I requested the same information, Mrs. Salazar, Princess Lattini, and have asked for a summary of fees paid for lawyers, asking one on behalf of the district. So, Mr. Robles, I think you have put together a presentation for the district. Thank you.
Because this is a referral...
This is a discussion of the administration.
We're discussing a topic and one has nothing to do with any thing as far as bills or things of that, 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 that's attorney.
One of the most... The most important is to give us fees. So, if we need to, I think we have an administration to practice a presentation for us. Is that right? You know, that's...
Mr. President, this requires action from your president. You need a motion and second before we discuss and enhance to turn over to CFO, obviously prepared as a beforehand committee. It's a matter of following the rules or...
Think whether you are following the rules.
Just very clearly, I see when people are making everything every night.
We have a lot of discussion. And I think to discuss.
Discuss something.
And if the district has put together a presentation, I'm not discussing anything.
You gotta make a...
Just like he arrived and the district has a presentation.
To give that, to be drawn and suspended, how do we...
The evidence.
Mr. President, I think you really...
I'm gonna see... First of all, any trick we can present before we make a motion on an item, give us information. Yes or no?
There must be a motion and a second before you discuss.
Do we or do we not? Have an administration...
You don't have a second, you don't have a discussion.
Before we call for motion, yes or no?
Yes, we need a... No, you have to have a motion, a second, and then you open for discussion.
So, we're all the time.
Those are the proper rules. Now, if you want to follow the rules, we're gonna follow the order, we're gonna follow them, follow them, that's what you do. If you don't wanna follow the rules, then open my client, you can rule whatever you want. The proper way is your attorney, without a body of law, you open these act. The proper way is to have a motion, have a second, and then you open for discussion.
So, it's right. Have you ever had an administration, give us a presentation?
I just don't wanna do anything. Yeah, yeah, administration, not true.
We never had an administration, give us a presentation before we call for a... If we look back, though, look on the... Am I correct, administration? All the times I have administration, and you give information, is this not true? I see someone shaking their head.
My job, my job is to keep the board out of trouble.
So, do you mind why he doesn't want to give his presentation?
You are extremely, you are...
I am?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I know that I've been sitting here for going on three years, I know administration has a right to give a presentation before we make a motion.
You still...
So, I will be, Mr. President, but you're gonna be...
The only time I'm...
Do we not have administration, have people at least give a presentation prior to calling a motion?
Mr. President, it says, it makes me, discussion, consider, take possible action on termination of legal service about the South Calasada County Attorney Department. Where, I mean, this, where is this item to say we're gonna have a document presentation? We're talking about this individual here.
It's a discussion.
Give us a motion and a second.
I just wanna, if we look back on records and if we have a record, a presentation, we'll be making a motion.
What kind of a presentation are you looking at?
The motion is actually, is related to the building services that Mr. Salazar...
That's...
Has posed, he has posed the question, he has wanted to know what were the past building practices of our lawyers. And I would think, out of the finding, to me, any cases that have been acted by the CFO to provide this information is pertinent to the discussion of whether or not he...
The only part of the bar, again, you cannot discuss, I only wanted to discuss it because it...
I don't want to say...
You're basically, I have a second. Can't do that.
The administration has a presentation.
An administration, supervisor. If it does a presentation, it depends on the public, though, there's gonna be a presentation. This is not for a discussion, consideration, possible action. You had a motion, you had a second, then you open up for discussion. If you're gonna say it to me, Doc, if you don't have a second.
I haven't made a motion.
You have a motion, that's why you can't say it, you can't make a motion. It's not only a decision, anyone looks at the presentation. Are we gonna be able to look at the presentation? It's not a fact, it's a purpose of the president. There is no fact that we can, in, there's no fact that we can, even if we're ready to be able to, to successfully and honestly be able to look at facts. There is still a fact.
Oh, because of that, you...
No, I just, I just... I'm gonna report one, there's nothing back, there has to be back, we don't have a word sheet.
The presentation from administration is simply made so that we have the information before we make a motion.
Certainly.
That's why we do it.
Yeah, it's not what we did.
Uh, that's the...
I'm not your lawyer. I just want to be transparent with them. So, if there's a presentation, then it's here.
And actually, so that we're all better in the world as well, I'd like to give a presentation to the board members and for the audience.
Mr. President, hi. For the record, this is a presentation being watched by a board member, not a... Mr. Robles, who directed you to make this presentation?
What was that, sir?
Who directed you to make this presentation? It's just, no, maybe, let's see, let's see, that's right, follow what it is. And to the question, who... Who directed you to make this presentation, did you discuss? Mr. Robles, you have to answer that. Did you direct her to make this presentation, Doc?
I actually, um, visited with Ms. Robles about the information that needed clarification from last board meeting, and so I asked her to be ready for it, uh, whether or not the presentation was gonna take place.
Did you direct this man to do your presentation today?
I discussed it with Ms. Robles.
Let's answer the question, did you direct her to do her presentation?
You should... Either way, either way, the president has paid.
Again, to the Robles, you should do it.
Sir, when it comes to information from our school district as far as certification of invoices or any other, uh, job, uh, related issues, yes, I will give any department directive, and yes, I discussed it with Ms. Robles. And yes, I discussed it with Ms. Robles.
Mr. President, it says, it makes me, discussion, consider, take possible action on termination of legal service about the, about the Southside of the County, about, uh, where, I mean, this, where is this item, is this thing we're going to have a document presentation? We're talking about this in the legal here.
It's a, it's a discussion.
Give this guy a motion, and you say discussion, termination.
I just want to, if we look back on the records, and if the district is ready for a presentation, will we make a motion?
What kind of a presentation are you looking at?
The motion is actually, is related to the building services that Mr. Salazar, uh, uh, and Mr. Lial, has posed, he has posed the question, he has wanted to know what were the past building practices of our lawyers? And I would think, out of the finding committee, I guess, they've been, um, uh, asked by the CFO to provide this information is pertinent, because of discussion, the lady, whether or not he, he was.
The only part of the bar, again, you cannot discuss, I only want to discuss it because.
Don't want to say.
You're basically, uh, second, but it's a hard one, that's. Can we call it, uh?
The administration has a presentation.
Administration, uh, super. If it does a presentation, it depends on the public, though, there's going to be a presentation. This is not for a discussion, consideration, possible action. You have had a motion, you have had a second, then you open up for discussion. If you're going to say it to me, Doc, if you don't have a second.
I haven't made a motion, I don't have a second.
That's why you can't suddenly become a motion. It's not only a decision, anyone looks at the presentation. Are we going to be able to look at the presentation? It's not a fact, it's a purpose of the president, there is no fact, and, and, there's no fact that any, any president should be able to, to successfully and honestly be able to look at. There is still a fact. No, I just, I just, I'm not. I'm going to pour a pool on you, sir, there's nothing back, there has to be back, if we don't have more.
The presentation of administration, it's simply made so that we have the information before we make a motion. That's why we did it.
Yeah, it's not what you did, man.
Uh, that's in the whole.
I'm not your lawyer. I just want to be transparent with you, so if there's a presentation, then it's here.
And actually, so that we're all better in the work as well, and talking to the presentation, the board members, and for the audience.
Mr. President. For the record, this is a presentation being watched by a board member, not a presentation. Mr. President, for the record, you're making a presentation.
What was that, sir?
Who directed you to make this presentation? This is, no, maybe, let's see, let's see, that's right, follow what it is, and to the question, please. Who directed you to make this presentation, did you discuss? Mr. President, I think, let me ask this, did you direct her to make this presentation, Doc?
I actually, um, visited with Ms. Robles about the information that needed clarification from last board meeting, and so I asked her to be ready for it, uh, whether or not the presentation was going to take place.
Did you directly ask Matt to do your presentation today?
I discussed it with Ms. Robles.
Let me ask a question, did you directly give a presentation? You said that.
Either way, either way, the president was saying.
The director was a do thing.
Again, to the Robles, you should do. You should do this, you should do this.
Sir, when it comes to information from our school district as far as certification of invoices or any other, uh, job, uh, related issues, yes, I will give any department directive, and yes, I discussed it with Ms. Robles, and I told her to be ready if we needed to present it. He asked for the information from the board.
And, Mr. President, we were, we go to the rules tonight, that I have a presentation that I would like, that one of the board members I've briefed you, that I have discussed with several of the, that I have a presentation, that I would like to direct, and I don't think it's a present.
I think you made a presentation last board meeting, so I didn't do it in the report. Well, you did yours last board meeting.
If this is your fault, I won't be able to present, why not? It was.
I don't have a problem.
That were altered, that were altered, people just that were altered, that were forced to get stamed out by this superintendent.
That is not correct, that is not correct.
What did he say, what did he say, that they were altered?
They were not altered, sir, I sent you both an email, and Mr. Castillo, because those were highlighted items that dealt with TROs, and dealt with the second quarter appeals, that had nothing to do with school business. I did the exact thing that he advised me to do with Mr. Peña, the former attorney, that any items that was not related to school business were not going to be paid, those were his directives. So, I used the same logic.
Like I said, I just wanted to understand, and that is true, she did send that information, that, uh, I don't see how it was, how it, uh, just, uh, modified.
That, it was not even modified, it was not modified, what happened was that the cover page, this, this, uh, Ms. Ramirez, would you allow me to explain?
You hear, you hear about this all the time, you're a person, you're a cop.
No, sir, no, sir, I sent you an email to explain.
Very, very quick, yes, we're, 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 we're. The only thing I had, I have, in the current room, did you present a bill, the bill has to be presented to us, and then when they present us a deal, correct me, uh, then you said, uh, um, he signed it, I, I'm not making, I'm making recommendations that these items do not be paid, but the bills have to be presented in their entirety to us, and then you make recommendations to us, and we're having to pay them, whether they're viable or not viable, and that's where it is. I mean, because the question is.
That has not been a practice.
Then, 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 another way, nobody has the right to pocket a deal, and what a pocket deal is, like, well, we're going to have this. Remember, when you say, these things should be paid, and that's on you.
She didn't pocket a deal, actually, she went and distributed information and highlighted some items that he advised her not to pay with the previous attorney.
My letterhead, my letterhead was duplicated by the superintendent, my letterhead, it's so transparent, and I have all the options, the one that I said, my email, and the one that, that was forwarded by somebody, and I believe this is.
I just wanted to discuss it, I just wanted to know.
And my letterhead was forwarded, a copy was made, and you could see where they put a white paper in a copy, and my C-1 was on the other there. And that's, and again, it was, if you don't, if you saw it, it said, May, June, July, in May, I gave this specific number of hours that I worked, and how much I charged, and the total. June, I gave this specific number of hours, how, how much I charged, and the total. July, I did the same thing, and in my invoice, which I have a copy here, if you want to see if you want to.
I'm sorry, you, you also have the information in your packet.
All, my May, June, July totals were, were taken off, they were copied, and again, I gave no money in the morning to copy my letterhead or my invoice, and it's, much less my.
I assume that you have the accurate numbers in your packet.
Well, I remember that, and the fact that told me was that since we did not, the district did not pay Mr. Peña, or the TRO, or that, uh, you, the, uh.
You were by a reason.
Her, not Mr. Peña, because it wasn't, so it's very, uh, related, it was not, it was not approved, those were, were added,
We had the following fees for legal services. We had P S S tax, making eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one for personnel matters.
And there's a hundred and fourteen thousand on today's agenda to get approved. Let's not forget those hundred and fourteen.
Equal bond, two hundred and three dollars for our human resources department issue. The law office of Linda Gonzalez Gata, one thousand dollars for working on a citation from the city of Redmond City. Marquise Sanchez Junior, three thousand dollars for a district property consultation. Renee Montalvo, sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty. Tax, bus accidents, special ed and human resources, the cost should have been covered by the insurance carrier. Walsh Gallegos, Renee Luso and Kyle, sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven.
That's actually sixty thousand with your business to live, which is a good idea.
Tax, bus accidents, special ed and human resources issues and this cost should have been covered by insurance carrier. The law office of Geran Farah, thirteen thousand forty-five. And that was the previous council for invoices for September and October of two thousand eighteen. The law office of Ruben Peña, fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. And it was also for invoices from January through May two thousand nineteen for the previous board council. Balthazar Salas, our attorney at law, T L L C, thirty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-seven. This is the actual amount that was paid and this is for invoices from May through July two thousand nineteen.
And so we have tax, excuse me, so the tax is our insurance carrier that would cover accidents such as fire, bus-related incidents. It was made up in twenty seventeen and so therefore we were responsible for the cost related to legal issues. That doesn't typically happen, issues are covered by insurance, legal one-time fees, which by the way, we now already have an insurance carrier. We don't expect to have these issues again. Also, it's about a lot, we reported in the last meeting that the N P C, six hundred and thousands of dollars on the N P C, which also should have been covered by tax. So we think, like, ironically, we did not tell you in detail exactly, we recovered one point seven billion dollars in taxes. Actually came away with one point five million dollars, so we incurred no fees in reporting. Also, we said that seven hundred and fifty thousand, I think he's now going to include the four hundred thousand settlement that we paid out to the employee, that is not an attorney's fee, it's not a P P K, it's on attorney. That was paid to the secretary for any agreement. Uh, I think that concludes it. So the thought that you see here, if you're questioning the CFO, sir, that right now is on a daily basis, is nothing close, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Maybe if you read more carefully, that either the detail, the side that's presented from the show, but you actually are trying to include a lot of things in that, um, and consider lawyer's fees. My point is that this money should not go to a lawyer's pocket.
The number is...
We deserve that. We deserve it. We need, we can need facilities.
And let's, let's be fair, sir.
I'm just gonna say, who's making the presentation?
I wish we had all this time and a message.
Governor.
And I'll have to...
Just to make a clear thought, the deductible on the insurance carrier, so you listen here, the deductible for his one hundred thousand dollars, that means that the district pays a hundred thousand dollars before we ever try to settle it. That's why we deductible. So yes, the pay people, and the numbers of that, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that I told you, I got those from two sources, Region One and Ms. Robles. Ms. Robles has a legal, and I will forward all board members tomorrow morning where she gave me the tolls of five hundred and eighty-three thousand. So I didn't just mix these up. Not only does Ms. Robles give to me, but Region One has those. And we don't have the... What is that? I just told them, we have the city, C I S B pays one of the highest pursuit legal fees in all of Region One. And my goal is to reduce.
Mr. President, the presentation...
Five hundred dollars an hour.
This is, this is...
Let's now, let's see, uh, Ms. Robles.
Ms. Robles, yeah, honey.
Well, I'm confused, because I've, I've asked of legal fees before and, uh...
And Mr. Salazar, if I would have, I listened to my emails and I didn't find that email. And I'm more than sure that you have said that it was five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I would have stated that four hundred thousand were included there, et cetera. So...
Well, I got, I got five hundred and eighty-three now. I gotta go with the toll that you do, like the doctor says, that you get every day.
I don't think I would have forwarded that information to you before you getting an agreement.
Again, my, my goal is still the same. My goal is still to reduce the legal fees. That's what I've been tasked with.
You have to pay twenty-five dollars per text message.
Nobody says, nobody says you're right, doctor is a doctor, so please respect my profession.
Oh, no, and nobody says that on average lawyers make twenty-five dollars per hour.
Now, 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 now...
But please, sign yourselves.
I, Mr. President, can't, it's all the, the idea. They, we're never gonna stop.
Well, I'm Mr. Salazar, Mr. President, one, he does really practices. Uh, to not have a agreement, ask for the stipulation of the motion made that this compensation package was supposed to be agreed upon by, uh, the, uh, board officers, uh, who rejected his offer, uh, and not able to come to the agreement, he has none. And lastly, I think that a lawyer should aim for the number of ten, I don't see, personal opinion. And I want to clarify someone, if you look at these papers, if they're examining, come to view, to me, it's a completely negative, erroneous claims about our business practices, just to make him look better.
To her.
That's my motion.
Do you agree?
I can, would I can do it? I motion for three reasons. I'm Mr. Salazar, because of the following. Number one, uh, if you can't afford it, this is the separate version, be too extensive. Number two, uh, he does the back of the letter to the superiors, N B S, representatives of the nation. And lastly, I think it would be better to send a money.
We have a second, do we have a, I mean, do we have a motion, do we have a second? Motion dies. Do we have a second? Motion dies. And, uh, Ms. Robles, can you please sit here? Because, uh, the nom, the numbers that I've seen in the past are different. Maybe that's why I'm telling you I'm confused, because... Yes, okay. Because, uh, even previous board members had that question too. Why, why were our legal fees so high? So, I'm, I'm confused. Uh, try to get through that information for tomorrow, whoever wants it. Give it to them and, uh, let's see what happens someday. And if it's true, I mean, if we're gonna save money, so be it, not to do it for the next quarter.
And Mr. President, I will tell you this. I will tell you, I will say this in front of all board members. I have already spoken with every board member. I have been here with the superintendent and I spent about two hours together. And we said this issue about the invoices, that maybe it was a misunderstanding, and maybe what Dr. Ms. Gata said, what project said, the vote of the listeners said. So we got to see iron this out. Ms. Gata's not a real candidate. He said, maybe they're it, maybe we can get it to have better practices. And my recommendation was that you call it and you let me know that the invoice is correct. I'll say that the invoice is... I just want the public, you know, the board, I tried to work this out and Ms. Gata denied, I think, have an agreement that it was a misunderstanding, but I don't want you to detect it. I was another, but anyway, I just have a word on that, I have already told it.
I do want to clarify something. We did speak, um, I don't think that Mr. Balthazar has proven to me that we can continue this relationship. Um, I do want to remind everyone that Balthazar is the school board attorney, not the school administration attorney. So therefore, I will seek another attorney for my, uh, school business.
Ms. Gata, before you get an attorney, you have to bring in the lawyer, alright?
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is a long time ago, so, I apologize.
I don't think we should, well, I think the public know what's going on in this school district. If anything, I apologize that it's going on, not to let you know what's happening.
I apologize.
We are, I think, to tell you, it's true.
I, I do...
Here it is, and it's on your...
I do, Mr. Robles, is that we should be able to make a difference when we're discussing things, and that's...
Agreed.
Yes, I think, I don't under two, that's a lot. I don't, I don't, two discussions, consideration, possible action, or make, make a...
I know that there would be no action, healthy, there can be...
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-four, with the exception of, of the numbers that I said. And, uh, who's the addendum? Item twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Which are the ones that's known?
So, and, and what is this discussing committee? Have you created a committee where you would know that, uh, the admin last time we were there? We're all very aware of what's on the agenda.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, forty, fifty-five, fifty-seven. Also in section eight, B, C, and D, by appointment, of athletic scientists, I don't know if you have one, another one in? I mean, the motion we have is, Mr. President. And we go, um...
Yes, sir. And the motion to approve all of it, correct, not to pass, approve.
Okay. For the last items. Okay, the last item, we had, also in section eight, approved item B, C, and D, and that is the employment of teachers. The athletic scientists and the Latin social position. Uh? That's social position. This, whatever's written on our board back.
But they, they should be approved, like you said.
Athletic scientist and, uh, recommendation for vacant positions and, uh, B. And section on resignation of fifteen personnel. It's a, it's, it's all housekeeping, it's nothing complicated.
And what do we want to remain items?
What do we want to remain items? You want to remain, so, so, general company, middle name.
Why does the old company need to look at them?
Because, man, you have things like, uh, your feet, uh, uh, discussion of legal counsel regarding, uh, twenty-five, seventy-eight, three, ninety-nine. Uh, discussion on...
But then how does this discuss the site?
Very. Discussion, discussion, which are possible, like, on the lease, whether we offer lease, you guys, to, to speak, to the people who know.
Why, this is an anguish, because you are a committee, it really is that complicated.
I'm gonna say, yeah, I have a motion. Now, all these are, all these are, are basically a group effect need for the district to move forward. And we will both, welcome the serve of the next meeting, bring all these other things that were discussed, bring them to the next meeting. All they are for housekeeping, uh, but another, maybe it's one of those, uh, a lot of people use their table for cancer, the cancer relay, for a new, uh, football, everything I think you do is housekeeping, or housekeeping.
What about item number ten, sir?
Uh?
Item number ten.
Item number ten, the only reason I didn't include it is because, item number ten is because I wanted somebody to explain to me, and I didn't want to go through the process. If, 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 yeah, I have a hundred and ten, wait a minute. I just do, item number ten, that's fine.
My understanding is you said you didn't want to go through the process of, sorry.
Uh, I, 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 I didn't say to the, to, to that, to that, to that, I'm always...
Item, do I, is that item ten?
Sure. Yes, oh, yes.
Uh, attached is the budget amendment two thousand twenty dash one. The budget amendment is being prepared to revise the current budget. Reditions expenditures are presented for your review and approval. We have, uh, expenditures requested, uh, from some campuses, uh, and departments, from function to function, that need approval. And I am committing also, uh, if I did amendment to our revenue, uh, to increase, uh, state revenue, a hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-four, two million, nine hundred and seventy-eight, and interest earnings of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Sir, number fifty-one, we have to meet a deadline with P A.
Any other housekeeping items?
Then, I'm gonna quickly go through it, sir.
They're all housekeeping, and I mean, housekeeping, and what I mean by that is, they should have been named as...
Right, correct. What about number thirteen, of the property value study?
I would like for a picture of, 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 because supposedly they want, uh, uh, they read the thing, they want their home point two, something million on the front. And I'm saying that doesn't make sense, how you even try to run fifty-four weeks to money? They say the problem is in us, uh, I don't know how many heads, but they want us to pay them front because it makes sense. Um, I, I want to do one, check here, let's say, please.
Are we discussing, like, because I feel that's very confusing, because I don't know, I don't know which one. And I'd also like to point out, that this sounds like it was not happening with this school. So he is actually not allowed, uh, to actually review any more material from this decision.
He hasn't been, he hasn't been, he hasn't terminated either.
Well, he has terminated, but he hasn't had a...
There hasn't been a board, the, the board hasn't passed anything, that's a big, come on, it's so many things.
So we have a motion said, pending the approval of the board...
Right, but it was, there was no action.
And he turned down his agreement, actually, and he was notified of that.
Who's got an office?
The board offices. The board offices, and the group, which school, the board officers, from this company, they have, they have not agreed on.
Man, we just, we just have a motion that, that basically, we, we could terminate any failment. We're, we're putting out an motion, uh, otherwise, we're, an motion, uh, otherwise, to keep the school going. Does that, and you, Jack, do you need anything else?
I wanted to, uh, visit item number nineteen, sir. Um, we're in need of a phone system, and, uh, we have two companies coming present to the committee. And, um, this is cloud-based with no, um, hardware. And, um, there will be a substantial savings of six thousand plus per month. And, um, we won't have to worry about our infrastructure, and so we were hoping...
I'm not trying to, this is my, my, my side.
Okay.
I decided, I'm like, see, not to...
Okay. It was submitted in the committee, that's your, your...
Oh, you're right.
Very useful.
Oh, you're right.
I, I don't know, team, uh, uh, we have six, um, we're gonna get new equipment, and still sit on my back.
Correct.
That's why I'm choosing the community. So, I, I think that's going here. Another, I, I...
Well, it's that, I didn't understand any, first, that's right.
And I don't know, twenty, this, this, uh, guys, their attorneys, they want to give us our papers. They, they, they told them, uh, they put in between twelve thousand, twelve thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. They got a, as already seen, out of T R S, they got a, they own bill, out of T R S, so, I think, uh...
And it was presented at region one, um, of the success of, of that, um, um, opportunity. And again, it's because, uh, we're eligible through the District of Innovation, that, um, we do not have to, uh, be sanctioned by P A's, um, requirements and guidelines. And because we are a District of Innovation, we can make an amendment to the District of Innovation and op, offer our employees an option of, um, competitive, uh, insurance.
Well, I'm just gonna say something. We've been years ago, we're self-funding. And if that's self-funding, we lost millions and millions and millions of dollars. The fact of the matter is that group insurance in, in our area is based on our group rate. The problem is that now we hear in South Texas, and we're ready, we have a lot of diabetes, we have heart problems, we have high blood pressure, and everything's based on that group. And, and, and that's what people need to understand, that all rates in this picture, R T C, C I T, are basically based on these things. How much do you pay in, and what do they pay out? And if they pay out, it's more than the payment, and that's what, the insurance is gonna go up.
And I remember that, uh, but it'll still afford us an opportunity to, you know, search for other competitive insurances?
Okay, this is exactly...
Okay. So number thirty-six has to do with a curriculum that the campuses are needing to use, um, which is a mathematics curriculum. Number thirty-six. What are they doing? I was in, that's, you know, that's the meeting, I was, he's speaking out, he deals with what is on the issue.
Uh, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in, uh...
Oh, okay, I think the superintendent's getting it, so she thought everything was important, I think that's like on the agenda, I might... I just wanna make sure, you know, the motion was made. Um, number thirty-six, Ms. Bassam? You know, that's what I'm saying, the curriculum, when you hit, when you go there.
You know, it's so sad, because those are curriculum, I was there for three hours. We listened to every presentation that they did, everything was to the T. And yet, we have to stop because, uh, I don't know what it is that you want, but I, I, I really am very disappointed that we, I had to spend three hours and feeling sick in front of everybody, yet we have to dismiss most of the ones that are...
Well, we just had that on, to you, the...
Well, we could have just gone through it.
Could we consider every item that's in curriculum, sir?
What you're about to say, sir? Let me ask you one quick question, just, don't we have, uh, what is it, mathematics, who's left in mathematics form, uh, um?
Yes, we do, sir.
We should have all these, maybe, practice.
Number thirty-four, number thirty-five, number thirty-six. Um, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, which is...
We got all, all of it, all of it.
Okay, okay, both of it, okay, I'm sorry. I think that's, that's all the curriculum.
So you got all your curriculum, right? So when that's it, Mr. President, whatever you're about to say, I mean, item, I have, I have a motion, and adding, what, that's, uh, all the items, uh, split apart. Can you second it?
Second it.
And the ones you talked about earlier about, uh, the...
Re central. And, um, the, um, insurance, uh, agreement with the attorney. Twenty, yes, sir. Twenty, nineteen, twenty.
So, President, I have a question for Mr. Salinas about policies.
Yes, sir.
How was it, uh, fun before?
When, Mr. President, members of the board, sprinting schools, the Gapsa. When, when I was, uh, at H R, when I started H R, our general counsel would present to the board, uh, and present the local policies, because the legal policies are, are, you know, they're not, non-negotiable, you have to adopt them, they're the law. So, you know, I guess suddenly in H R, I noticed that I could handle the local policies, present them to the board. And the way, my, my take is that T A S G is gonna recommend something that, that's good for the district. So what we do is, we break it down by director, for example, policy update, whatever it is. We contact food services, transportation, wherever it pertains to, and we get their take on what they're actually practicing. Um, and of course, it's aligned with, with the, with the legal, which is the law. So, in the committees or at the board meetings, we present to the board. And if anything we thought that stood out, or that was, uh, controversial, or something that, you know, I didn't want to come up here and act like an attorney, so we'd run it by our general counsel, just to make sure that, that we were on track. Also, the ones that pop out, Mr. President, to answer your question, are any policies that are omitted. Uh, when these policies are omitted, um, we make sure that, uh, that, uh, that the department will not be hurt by, by the policy being omitted. Give you an example, there's one on the packet today, I believe it's C O Local, that talks about application for free and reduced lunch. And, uh, we are a free and reduced, uh, district, so there is no need for application, however...
Mr. President, you have a, you have a, you have a...
I emailed them to Mr. Salazar.
Have you seen him, Salazar?
Yes.
Are you prepared to approve?
No, I just get the, I just, to review them. Get out of the main, the request before, and they were not, for whatever reason, they were not meant to be, but it's not a, it's not a, you know, it's, kind of, no, it's...
Correct.
Although we want to be, to be, to approve early, not too late.
So if you're approving today, we may approve nineteen, that's, uh, for, for, put it on the agenda, that's worth it.
That, that is correct.
Do you remember, Dr. Salinas, when you sent him over to the attorney?
I don't recall the date, Ms. Gapsa, but I do have it on my email. And I did call Mr. Salazar and advise him that I was going to email him, I think...
Because I think it was about a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago.
Two and a half, a couple, the, the, the last week.
There was, Mr. Payne, there was, uh, I got a couple of calls today, my office, regarding a senior trip, that we, uh, I think, need to confirm, uh, pretty soon, because they already made, they made five reservations, and room reservations, and the, the prices are gonna skyrocket, if they don't...
Is it on there?
No, it's not on there, but if we could, kind of, approve it, because I know that it was time-sensitive. Uh, it was, they were gonna incur a lot of cost if we didn't decide that. It was a senior trip for the Drua High School, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I wanna confirm, because I got a few calls on my office about that. And I don't know, uh, I'd like to address, begin, uh, address that issue.
Okay.
With, with, uh, Mr., with the president.
Yeah, you all pay for the next one meeting, I mean, can you just give a go at it, and put a, both of them, like, in, and everything?
Oh, most definitely, I, I was not aware of that one. Okay, and who did you talk to? Okay, just text me, please, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, I'd like to make sure that item twenty-three and twenty-two for tax refunds is approved tonight.
Twenty-three? What, twenty, twenty-two and twenty-three?
Yes.
Well, the motion is to, uh, all the items, but whatever the superintendent said, whatever the doctor said, and whatever the president and the board said, that's fine. And there are other...
And the last one being the Drua High School, uh, senior trip.
They're all ready, housekeeping, and I think, uh, I think, we can get to the sections for all the people, so. There must be nothing... I have a bit of a moment, uh, sorry, you, Mr. Payne. Can you produce anyone, can I have a bit more, please?
Good evening, Mr. Velazquez, members of the board, Ms. Gapsa, audience, let's present. Item fifty-one, sir, has to do with, uh, the bilingual exception and waiver, uh, that P A requires.
I think that was included, it was included, I just, I don't wanna, just not to say it. It was already, I think it was included, it was already, unless you still want him to explain?
So, I, I want to...
Included.
It was included.
Yes.
Yes. I tell you what, thank you.
Fifty-two, sir? Yes, yes, fifty-two as well.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Fifty-five and fifty-six?
Fifty-five, there, it's, it's not... Living father requests a sudden, uh, training, by combination, teachers were the, uh, school here, and four, and three, and four, six, three.
Okay, that's fine, you can do it. Any ones that got it, so we can be brought in the next one meeting, so. The motion I have to do with legal issue, so. President? We have a motion, I say, with all the, all the additions of the, of the doctors, of yourself, and Taps, whatever it is, we're generally reporting. Can we, uh, exclude the, the, those items, and, uh, the items on the whole session? Or mostly discuss? Well, because, both are in our package already, you didn't accept it because they're in our package, they already represented in our package, right?
Right, what's the, the margin? You don't need to go into the executive, that's, that's already, you're right, it's...
Unless, if you're in our package, that, that they're there, and I work at, but it's not me.
But I do want to discuss some, item number eight, sir?
On the whole session.
Fine, I understand that, B, C, and D, already...
Okay, we can go to both of this, and, and, to the right side. All right, uh, motion, motion, Mr. Payne, that's, that's...
Second it.
We should have, uh, uh, raise your right hand. Motion passes. You have a, please. There's also, two. On the authority, which is, we're on the fourth section, five, five, twenty, one, zero, seven, one, dash, five, eleven, one, eight, four, for the whole session.
Ms. Gapsa, uh, we have the Tulare Technology Program from Drua High School that prepared, uh, refreshments for this evening. Um, I want to recognize Ms. Adalina Villarreal and her staff. And, uh, I know after all of this, uh, we still want you to join us, the kids work really, really, really hard. So we ask you all to join us for those refreshments that the students prepared.
It is now eight forty-nine, we're back to open session. I was approached by Mr. Weller to, uh, see if any of us have any questions about the multipurpose center.
The only thing, Mr. President, I, I would like, and I've, I've talked about this before, I don't have a problem with Mr. Weller, as long as somebody looks at this bill, and if the bill checks out, we'll pay it. And that, all I was, all, all I'm asking for is having somebody send us a big bill of a hundred and tw- twenty-seven thousand dollars is for legal counsel to check it out, and we'll have a meeting in two or three weeks if he agrees with it, okay? That's what I say, basically. I just think, I don't have a problem, but I, I would like for somebody to check the bill out, you know, I'm not an attorney, you know, I, I don't know, it's probably a good bill. But I, before we go and approve a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars, I think it would be wise for us, somebody to check to make sure it's okay. In other words, how much we...
Mr. President, members of the board, I guess it's not on. Um, I appreciate the questions, uh, uh, Mr. Villarreal, I really do. And I understand, uh, why you have a question about that. Um, I, I came, uh, down here from Austin today to be present, to answer any questions that might be raised about the nature of that. Uh, what happened in the matter, why we initiated it, why our firm was brought in, what the district was originally offered by T A S, what we recovered, and the things that we had to do to substantiate that claim and prove it off. So if there are questions, I am here and present, and that some of them, you know, it's a litigated matter, if you would like to discuss in close, I'd be delighted to, to answer those questions about it.
Mr. Weller, I, I'm, you did a fantastic job. I'm not gonna say you did, but I, I, I just, I'm, I'll be honest with you. You got, you got money from us where there was no money, and I think that's a great thing. But I'm just saying that if, if we've waited, what, two or two and a half years on the multipurpose center, I don't think there's a big deal in waiting three, four, if, if, if he, uh, looks at the bill and he says it's perfectly great. I, I think you did a good job, but I, I show tires and propane, and you asked me a question about propane or tires, and I can answer it. But I don't know much about bingo fees, so, I would just like somebody, before we paid one twenty or one forty, to check it out, and if it's great, and you'll get your money in three, four weeks, I don't think it's a big deal. And I, I think that you're in our shoes, you'd basically say the same thing.
Yes, sir, I do appreciate your comment.
But I don't have a problem, I think you did a fine job. Uh, I think you, you recouped a lot of good money for us, no, no doubt about it. But I just want to check, I, I'm not, I, I, this gentleman is an attorney, but, you know, right now he's a board member, but none of us are attorneys, man. If they check it out, and the bill's great, fantastic, three weeks from now, you'll, you'll have a great Christmas. Okay?
I agree, because I would invest a hundred and some, or two hundred and some thousand dollars to get one point seven five.
I think he did, yeah, I think he did a great job. The only thing I'm saying is, let's check the bill out, if he checks it out, let's pay him. I don't have a problem, and I'm, I'm pretty sure, as long you get the money before Christmas, you're doing great, right? Before Thanksgiving, right?
Yes, sir, that's true, I, I will, I, uh, one other, I, I did have an opportunity to speak with your, your attorney, Mr. Salazar, about it. We did exchange him information, I provided a packet in regard to the nature of it. And, and, uh, uh, only a part of that, that is in front of the board right now, relates to, um, these that would go to me. Some of it relates to consultants, some of it relates to bankruptcy council, we had to file suit against T A S in bankruptcy court to get paid. And another thing I'll say is that, um, I was very happy to participate in that matter, on behalf of the district. We were very, very, we were very pleased with the result. Uh, we're excited about the funds that were recovered, and the ability that the district will have to use that money, uh, to work on the multipurpose center, which our design and our aim was to assist in the, in the construction facility that would be used by the community, because it was a multipurpose center, with a community center. And that is the goal, and that remains the goal. So I appreciate, uh, to each one of the board members and, uh, the, the privilege to, to represent you in that matter.
Like I say, I only heard great things, I think your, your rep, uh, representation precedes you. I only heard great things about you, but like I say again, I, I, I'm just a cautious man. If I'm gonna, if we're, if this board's gonna pay one forty, I just wanna make sure that everything's good, and you'll have your money before Thanksgiving, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Weller, as a, as a fellow attorney, I, I don't think you, probably wasn't communicated to you exactly, where, I mean, it wasn't an executive item, uh, executive session item, it was rather one, an open, under one of the requisitions. So, uh, I don't know who asked, specifically asked you to be here, I think it's something you could have done over the phone, or three emails with our, uh, attorney, but... So for that end, you know, I apologize on behalf of the board that you've come down from Austin, because I know, I take the trust myself all the time, and I don't know what burden somebody can be. So thank you for, for being here and for answering the few questions we, uh, were able to ask at the last moment, considering the circumstance.
Yes, sir.
You need to get away from Sixth Street, sir, so don't worry about it.
I, I, I do not go there.
That's what they all say.
Appreciate, okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weller.
There's no, uh, motion needed on item A?
We've already passed item B, item C, and item D, Mr. President? I think we have no...
There's no, uh, motion on item E? We have a motion on item F?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item F, G, and H, as discussed in closed session, correct?
We have motion by Mr. Villarreal, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Second by Mr. Ramires, holding paper, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Section nine, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ramires, second by Mr. Villarreal.
Last thing I say, the Radlers and I play, and go Gators this week. Sixth Street, sir, Sixth Street, I know, I've seen you there.